Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 16th meeting of the East Tenfield Township Board of Supervisors. Tonight's meeting has been advertised to be held in person and online using Zoom, with login and call-in information posted on our website. The meeting will be conducted by the chairman, who will be assisted by an employee managing the Zoom site. Tonight's video and audio is being recorded, and Robert's rules apply. To offer comment, you must be recognized by the chairman. For a meeting participants on Zoom, please use the chat function to be recognized and text your name and address to the moderator. Your request to speak will be passed on by staff to the chairman to be recognized. Once recognized by the chairman, unmute your microphone, and then after speaking, please mute your microphone. East Tenfield Township Public Comment Rules will apply for all public comment. You must be a resident or business owner in the township to speak. You must identify yourself by name and address before speaking, and sign the guest log for meeting-minute purposes, or follow the chat procedure already discussed for Zoom attendance. Individual comment is limited to three minutes and must be about the agenda item being discussed, with the exception of public comment when non-agenda items can be addressed. No action will be taken on any non-agenda item of a non-emergency nature during the public comment period for non-agenda items. We now will move on to our first agenda item. Please join me for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Our first agenda item for consideration this evening is our Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda addresses the approval of routine and repetitive business matters that tend to need little or no review, discussion, or deliberation. Consent Agenda items are provided to all board members for review in advance of our meeting. Is there any comment on the Consent Agenda from the board?
No.
Okay. Roger?
Uh, no, 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 no comment.
Sounds good, thank you. And that Roger is Roger Brubaker, our fifth supervisor, who's joining us on Zoom tonight. Okay, hearing none, then I'll entertain a motion for approval of the Consent Agenda. Items A through D as presented. Motion for Mr. Wigglesworth, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Brubaker. Motion for Mr. Wigglesworth, second from Mr. Brubaker. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes five-zero. And then on, I'll hear a motion to approve Consent Agenda Item E, which is the invoice list. We'll have Mr. Russell, who'll be abstaining due to a conflict. I'll hear a motion to approve that.
So moved.
A motion from Mr. Johnson, do I hear a second? Second from Mr. Bennett. All those, uh, motion from Mr. Johnson, a second from Mr. Bennett. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes four-zero.
One.
Four-zero-one, thank you, Scott. Okay. First up, we have the United Disability Service Foundation, a resolution in support for next funding project with a grant submission to the local services account funding source. Mrs. Schweitzer, do you have anything to add?
I don't, but I believe we have a representative here that's going to explain what they are asking for this time.
We've got your CEO for the United Disability Services, Department of Services, uh, 2270 or 2260, we're in court. Last year, we were kind enough to grant your resolution. So we're going to do it.
Thanks. Last year, we were kind enough to grant a resolution for an LSA application. We have not had any feedback yet on the results of that application. I did check to try and give you an update, but apparently it's being evaluated October 22nd, so we may find out about that. So since we haven't heard about this, we wanted to go ahead and move forward with another LSA application. One of the things I talked about last time I was here was the tremendous issues that folks with disabilities and even older adults have with transportation. And so one of the things that we hope to do this year is to create an actual campus of all our services in one place there at Aaron Court between 2260 and 2270. We would actually be moving our non-medical personal care and our Adult Day program over to our own campus, so that people coming there could actually do multiple things in one, you know, trip. One of the things that happens when you're taking outside transportation, people with disabilities can only accomplish one thing in one day and one service. This way, we could have all of our services within that campus, and they could accomplish multiple things if that's what they needed. The reason I point that out is we can't begin to do that because the building of 2260 has no elevator and has no accessible entrances the way we would need it to really serve all of our clients. And so that's why we're asking for this as part of our building.
Okay, any comment from the board members?
Think it's worthwhile.
Absolutely. Could you give us some idea how many individuals you serve?
We serve over 11,000 every day throughout the entire Commonwealth. We actually have locations outside of Lancaster, but Lancaster is our corporate office, and Lancaster is where we serve over 3,500 of our clients with all of our services. We have 14 different programs and services here in Lancaster County, and all of them are headquartered here, and this is a way we can bring them all under one umbrella.
Awesome, very good. It's good to know. Okay, any comment from the audience, anywhere?
And maybe just to explain to the audience what we're doing, especially this young Eagles fan here.
Okay, yes.
That we're giving a resolution in support of their application. They're applying for local funding, local services.
Yeah.
Grant.
It's always good to have the municipality in your corner when you're going after money from the state.
It's huge.
And as our applicant will attest, the wheels of government sometimes turn snow slowly when they're giving money out.
We were supposed to have an answer by mid-September, as you probably were too, if you had a grant enough, but everything. We were told, though, there were 400 applications this past year, and that's probably why it's slowed down. That's the most they've ever had.
Well, I think, yeah, speaking for myself, I'm glad to provide the support you're looking for on this, as I think everyone else would be also.
Agreed.
Roger?
Agreed, yes. I know my own mother, I know what it's like to try to coordinate those appointments and to have things consolidated, to do multiple things on one trip is, would be much appreciated, I'm sure, by many.
Okay, very good. Okay, so with that, I'll hear a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-16, a submission of a local services account grant application on behalf of the United Disability Services Foundation. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Wigglesworth, do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, second from Mr. Russell. Motion from Mr. Wigglesworth, a second from Mr. Russell. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you so much.
Good luck to you.
I appreciate it very much.
Glad we could help.
I'll update you on how we do, okay?
All right, thank you. All right, next up, we have roadway dedications Hampton Heath and Hayden Manor. Mrs. Schweitzer?
So these two developments have been in the development stage for quite a number of years. They have finally completed. They've had their inspections done by our engineer and Perry Madonna. Both plans have gone to the Traffic Commission for signage, Hampton Heath tonight, and it's ready for consideration of the board to accept these roadways. I do want to say that normally these roadway dedications happen before September 1st, in which case we then get liquid fuels for them. Because of the lateness of this, it's unlikely that we will get liquid fuels for this year, next year, but then it will be on the rolls in future years. It's about one-mile roadway, which amounts to about $3,000, $3,100, $3,200 that we would get from liquid fuels for that one mile, which we're going to, if you adopt them, would be foregone this coming year, but then be in future years.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board?
I just have a question for Mr. Sturgis. I know there had been some complaints, I think, in both of these developments from residents for, I think, some minor issues. Just want to make sure all of those issues that we had control over were addressed and were communicated back to the different residents in those neighborhoods.
Yes, they were. I'm not sure how aware they are of the roads being dedicated and that we would be taking over plowing, but I could definitely reach out and let them know that.
I think that's going to be a benefit to them, and I'm sure they'll be happy about that part or that aspect of it. But the other items, they were, to your understanding, resolved in the developer group or builder followed through with it, taking care of the items they had concerns about?
Yes, to the best of my knowledge, they have.
Okay.
And I think we still have escrow on them as well.
We do.
Thank you. All right, anything else from the audience this evening? Okay, hearing none, then I hear a motion to approve Resolution 2024-17, 2024-18, and 2024-19, accepting the dedication of Herrendale Drive, Lightwood Court, and Wayland Drive in the Hampton Heath Development. Their motion.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Russell, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Wigglesworth. Motion from Mr. Russell, a second from Mr. Wigglesworth. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes five-zero. And then we also have a motion on Hayden Manor, Phase 1 Starbush Drive, Camus Lane, Wild Lilac Drive, and Thistle Court. All right, I'll hear a motion to approve Resolution 2024-20, accepting the dedication of the roads I've just mentioned. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Motion from Mr. Russell, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Johnson. Motion from Mr. Russell, second from Mr. Johnson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes five to zero. Our last action item is Nissley Road Basin, a motion to accept the bid for the project from B.R. Kreider. Mrs. Schweitzer?
So this project has, when we started designing this project, it was quoted by our engineer of being an estimate of $474,000. Having received the bids for the project, it has turned out to be considerably more than that. We had one bid for just shy of $3 million, a second bid for just, or two actual bids for just around 1.2. The engineer provided you a review and some changes to the base bid, that he is recommending that we accept the base bid of 909, and then have some deducts from that bid to bring the total cost of the project to $832,795, and the bid would be awarded to B.R. Kreider. This project has some stipulations in terms of getting it completed. It's my understanding, well, we do have grants of $363,000 towards the project, but the difference would have to be made up by the township. I currently have this project listed in the 2024 budget in the Capital Reserve at $840,000. The Capital Reserve currently, I have projected out to 2028, and that balance is just over $3 million. So the Capital Reserve could absorb that additional cost. $3 million in the reserve account assumes that there's no major projects coming through between now and 2028. Most of our projects are completing and wrapping up. The only one that's on the horizon is probably the Landisfield Bridge, which probably is a 2030 consideration at the earliest.
So, I'm sorry, I tried to follow you on that, and you're going to have to help me through. Again, if I understood you, the 2024 budget roughly had $800,000 budgeted towards this...
No, the budget originally, the 2024 budget had, in the Capital Reserve, $400,000 and some $1,000.
So it, the 2024 budget was for $400,000 roughly?
Yes.
We have a grant for $300,000?
363.
Okay.
And there was a match to those grants, which is why the difference there, and that was accepted by the board when the 2024 budget was passed.
So ballpark is about $100,000 shortfall. When you factor in the revised drop in the one basin, we had $400,000 budgeted, we got the grant, and we have an $800,000 bill, and the grant covers $300,000, just rounding numbers.
Yes.
Because they're kind of putting just terms for everybody, it's a $100,000 overrun.
No, it's $400,000 overrun.
From what was budgeted, we had $400,000. I get what the engineers estimate is, but we also got grant monies from West Hemphill, nice little gift.
That's 363.
Which helped us out greatly that went to us. So in the net, and the day is, we're on the hook for an additional $100,000 than what we planned for.
I thought there was a second grant of $150,000.
That includes the 150.
Yeah.
The project right now is standing at $840,000.
Right, so it's eight...
You'll have 363 in grants. The difference is $400,000-ish.
Ish, so that's what I'm saying, since we had $400,000 budgeted, we got grant monies in, which will make that $400,000 going back into the Capital Reserve. It would be nothing if it had been part of the original budget, it's not. So we're taking the $400,000 from Capital Reserve, we have the grant monies, and we're making up the little bit of the difference that gets us to $800,000 because of the matching funds.
The $400,000 included the grants.
The $400,000 included the grants, okay.
Yes.
And that is not correct. It is $400,000 overage.
Yes, yes.
So, okay, how much exactly were the grants?
One for 150, and then 150, and the other one was two, whatever the difference is. It was 363 total, so 213. I'm not saying that right. You remember?
Don't. It was, explained pretty well in the budget documents that we have. Do we have a copy of the, of that?
I have a question while she's looking. Do we, did we get an explanation as to why the estimate was, we're so much over the estimate, the original engineer's estimate? Was that time, or they missed something, or I know, I know personally, construction, construction materials and costs have escalated significantly in the last couple of years, certainly, but why is there so much of a delta between what was originally estimated by the engineer and what our low number came in at?
I asked him that question, they couldn't come up with an answer. They are scratching their heads as hard as we are of why they missed it so badly.
Yeah, because even the low number is twice what they, what they had, what they had come up with their engineering estimate, so that, that's pretty unusual to be that far off.
I mean, is there any rush to accept this tonight?
We'd like to get the project done before the end of the year.
There's a grass and grading and ENS and all those things that are kicking in now.
And we have grant deadlines.
I mean, is there no, no chance to rebid it, nothing, I mean, if they're that far off?
You can rebid it, but you're going to get the same numbers very quickly.
I mean, more, when does, when's the due date for the grants? I thought we had to have this stuff done by like May-June.
That's what I was told. The Clean Water Grant, they can push till February, and the West Hemphill Grant, they're asking for a six-month extension till March.
So we do have a kind of a gun to our head a little bit from a timeline.
Less of a gun, but yes, a gun. We thought it was the end of the year, and now we're something different.
And Scott, to your, to your point, Scott, I think, Mr. Wigglesworth, I think that, you know, we, based, based on the other bids that we received, you know, it's not like we have one high, one bid that seems high and nothing else to substantiate that. I mean, it sounds like we had, what, three or four bids that were more, well more than double of what the original engineer's estimate was, so that, that would tell me that the original estimate was too low, there was something, something missing or something. I would, yeah, I'm, I would, I would agree. If we'd rebid that, I think you'd come up with the same numbers.
Was, how many people bid on this?
We had one sealed bid, which was Kreider. We had another bidder, Lowbar, which is part of the Keystone Network, they're doing the park out front. And then we had Cozer, who's part of the Co-Stars Project, all bid on it.
And where did Cozer's come in at?
Very similar to Kreider's.
I mean, I don't like the overrun, but I will probably state that it was a bad estimate at this point. It's not, I don't think rebidding is going to help, and it's going to put our grants in jeopardy at this point. We're not going to get additional grant monies, more than likely at this point, to make up a $400,000. And I know you know this too, Scott, we, this is 13 years in the making with this basin because of the flooding in our neighborhood. So this is kind of, this is not our normal, normal project. I think we, I would recommend we move forward with it, even though it kind of hurts a little bit, it's coming from our Capital Reserve as much as it is, but I think we kind of, kind of move forward with this at this point.
The Clean Water Grant was 150,000, the grant from West Hemphill was 213, so 363.
So is the 363 what we have to match?
No.
What do we have to match?
The, we have to match in-kind services, I believe, of 40,000 on the clean, clean water money.
So there, so there is actually 363,000 in grants?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
The difference is about $400,000 that we had not budgeted for.
That's what we have to pay.
Right. I guess the way, then we're back to what Scott's analysis was, is that right? That we're down 100,000 from what we budgeted?
No, no, I was, if, if we had budgeted using Capital Reserve money of $400,000, but the Capital Reserve included the grant monies, it was putting it in there as in and out, like we've done with other grants.
Yes.
I missed that when Cindy was saying it.
Okay, now I'm following it. Okay, so the grant money was going into the Capital Reserve, and that was part of the budgeted amount.
Exactly.
Okay, now I got it. I understand it. I'm slow sometimes, that's all, but it clicked. Thank you.
Okay, it'd be mine, I mean, I've worked with Cindy with some ideas, and we balanced the site out, which got the cost down. The site wasn't balanced, there was a lot of material that was getting hauled off, so once the site was balanced, that improved some of the numbers for it, but I don't think we're going to get a better number. The construction numbers have been coming in pretty high, as Mr. Brubaker said, so.
The shortfall's 100,000?
No.
Unexpected, unexpected.
Unexpected is 400,000.
Right. Yeah, I was explaining it wrong at first. That's why I got myself confused with Cindy too. But no, it's a 400, it's a $400,000 shortfall, it's not budgeted. It will come, $400,000 more than what was planned for will come out of Capital Reserve.
So the 400,000 we have to put in on our own money, 213 grant money and 150 grant money would make up the eight.
But we, but we did this expecting to put what in?
40,000.
Of our, of our money, of township money, capital, capital, Capital Reserve?
About 40,000, I believe it was.
All right, well, at the end of the day, we've got, if we want to maintain, be sure that we're going to get the grant money, we need to move this project along. We have, we have the funds available to do that. We do recognize that there was a miss on the estimation side here, but there's nothing we can do about that now, so I agree, we should be moving ahead with this project.
Just some background, just a reminder for most that aren't aware, what drove this was Tropical Storm Lee and the flooding of the houses in Mill Creek, that this basin will help address a lot of that stormwater flow that comes from the top of the hill and works its way all the way down to the bottom of the hill where Mill Creek is. So that's, this is a, not just a stormwater project, but it's also a flood mitigation project.
Okay. All right, any comment from the audience? Okay, hearing none. I hear a motion to accept the base bid for the B.R. Kreider and Sons Incorporated for 909,445, which deducts the removal of amended soils, raising the bottom elevation, and removal of the one-year mowing requirement per DMA recommendation letter of October 11th, 2024. Hear a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion from Mr. Russell, and a second from Mr. Brubaker. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes five-zero. Okay, next up, we have old business. Any old business out there to discuss this evening? Seeing none, let's move to new business. We have a Steiman Quarterly Project Report. I don't see anyone here for that. Mrs. Schweitzer, do you have?
It's just their updated quarterly report. There's really nothing to review or approve.
Or comment upon.
No, they're still looking for funding. They're still about the same amount short that they were before.
Okay, sounds good. Next up, we have Traffic Commission Report. We had Traffic Commission this evening at 6 o'clock. We discussed traffic speed studies on Church Street, Nissley Road, and Banner Drive. We approved our minutes. We also took a look at the Wilson Two-Lane Update on the improvements there for the Friends We also briefly discussed the purchase of a new software package that will track vehicle speed on all township roads, give us an idea of what's going on out there from a speed standpoint. This software package has the potential to save some pretty significant money, because it will, I don't know, that it'll completely be a substitute for man traffic speed monitoring, but it certainly will do a significant portion of it, and I think in the long run will, will provide us some cost savings. So we had a good discussion about that, touched upon Farmingdale Road and just that project. Like to close that project out with Pendot, we're still waiting for some, some last-minute paperwork and approvals. Anything else from my fellow members of the Traffic Commission? All right. Hearing none, all right, that's the Traffic Commission Report. Next up, public comment? We have public comment this evening? Public comment? No public comment this evening. No public comment this evening. All right, and then let's move on to the manager's report.
So Centerville Road South, again, it's moving along. I don't believe there's anything to really report on that. The project is going to continue until September 2025. The Old Roarstown Road Bridge, we're now getting down to the last few weeks of this project. We still hope to have this finished by the end of October. The Farmingdale Road project, as the chairman mentioned, the grant reimbursement has been submitted, and we're waiting for the comments back or a check from the state. The zoning hearing board validity challenge for Colebrook will be Thursday, October 17th, which is tomorrow. The Route 72 and Lititz Road temporary signals. The traffic engineer is working on the bid specifications, those are being fine-tuned. We did have a meeting with the property owner that's involved with this project and have ironed out some of the details that he had expressed with his concerns. Hopefully that project will be bid in the next week or, or next month or so with a spring construction. Framing on the Bocchi Courts at Amos Hur is underway. It should be under roof shortly. And starting, beginning of November, they are moving to the parking lot on that project. The Noldora Park, we're finalizing the design plans, the DMA is, and that's also a, is a 2026 start date, which will coincide with the Blue Green Corridor completion of their portion of the trail. We're awaiting the signed contract and performance bond for the trash and recycling bids. So as soon as that occurs, then we'll meet with them and discuss moving forward for next year. The Church and Knoll Road Park, I still have the attorney, attorneys working on changes to the GSL agreement. We're down to one small section that our attorney has to provide some language and then will be considered by GSL. We dealt with Hampton Heath and Hayden Manor, those, those projects. We also discussed the Lauster Basin or the Nisley Basin. I don't believe that there's anything else to report on that. We did have an admin finance meeting concerning the budget, and we have another meeting scheduled for Friday to review the budget before our public meeting to discuss on October 22nd at 4:30. Completes the report unless there's questions. We also had an executive session between meetings to discuss a legal matter.
Question? On the, the trash, Casella, a few meetings ago, was talking about the possibility of offering free bins to residents. Did that ever shake out? Is that something that?
We're waiting for him to submit the signed contract and the performance bond. We can have that conversation with him. We, as staff, need to look at that, how that works and functions within the context of some do, some don't. Once we have that conversation, we can let you know.
Okay.
I thought there was some comment from our attorney that because it was not part of the initial bid process, it would be difficult for us to.
We couldn't negotiate before the bid was awarded. The bid had to be awarded based on the submitted bids.
All right, but now it'd be okay to have that discussion?
Yes.
There's nothing that prohibits from the, our vendor from giving us a discount or if they choose to voluntarily offer it?
Okay, and then the, on the same subject, the customer service, you know, residents should be calling a different number, not the office in the future.
Starting beginning of the year, yes.
Okay, and that'll be advertised somehow?
Best we can, yes. Newsletter's already done, but yes, it'll go out. And plus, when they call, they'll be referred to the contractor.
I'm sure we could put that on the website right next to that telephone number itself, that all press inquiries go to this number.
They actually added their customer service number to the newsletter in the phone directory so that it was out there and available for people that keep track of that. We've also discussed internally in finance, putting a note on the first trash billing that goes out in the new year with that information. And we, we have a pretty good plan to communicate that information out to the residents.
Okay, thank you. And one more topic, it could have gone under old business. But we talked a few months ago about solicitation and the, you know, making some changes to that, and just wondering what the status is of that?
So that was discussed during the public safety meeting, and it's still under review by them. So as soon as they give the authorization, we'll move it to the board.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else from the board?
No.
Roger, anything?
Uh, no.
Okay, sounds good. All right, hearing then, we'll adjourn our meeting here at 7:36.